I think we should stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
That was the other meeting.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we have a few presentations that the mayor will be making, some joint resolutions. Mr. Mayor?
Yes, I'd like to, on behalf of the council president and myself, we have a joint resolution, and I'd like to ask Brenda Chambers and Susan Bugasian to come forward. And this resolution is Wear Orange Light Up Southfield Day. It's actually where we've... ladies, please, come forward. We're... you may have noticed that City Hall now for the month of June has been lit in orange at night. And we're gonna deviate from that a little bit on Friday because we're gonna go purple, which I'll explain in a minute. But anyhow, this is a joint resolution, Wear Orange Light Up Southfield Day, June 7th. Wear is inspired by high school students from Chicago. The Wear Orange campaign was inspired by childhood friends of Hadiya Pendleton, a 15-year-old high school student who was shot and killed on a playground just one week after performing at President Obama's second inaugural parade. And whereas, after her death, orange is the color of Hadiya's friends wore on her birthday to commemorate her life and has since become the defining color of gun violence prevention movement. Whereas Moms Demand Action for Gun Sense in America is a grassroots movement with chapters in every state of the country fighting for public safety measures to protect people from gun violence. And whereas, part of the largest gun violence prevention organization in the country, Moms Demand Action for Gun Sense in America, has pushed back against the gun lobby and fought for common sense laws and policies achieving unprecedented victories against the gun lobby. And whereas National Gun Violence Awareness Day is observed on the first Friday in June to promote awareness and education of gun violence in America. And whereas, on Friday, June 7th, 2019, the lights that illuminate the Southfield Municipal Building and numerous key buildings will glow orange in support of Moms Demand Action for Gun Sense Oakland and Macomb County, and to remember Hadiya Pendleton and the hundreds of victims of senseless gun violence. Now therefore be it resolved that we, the mayor and council city of Southwood County of Oakland, state of Michigan, do hereby declare June 7th, 2019 as Wear Orange Light Up Southfield. And this... and I appreciate, this was scheduled for June 3rd, but we had that... the agenda that evening was the police chief interview, so we were delayed until this is our first meeting since then. So, ladies, again, this is Brenda Chambers and Susan Bugasian. Both women have lived in the community for a very long time, and I taught your son and you were my neighbor. So I'll present that to you. I don't know if you have a word or two that you'd like to say?
Well, thank you. This is the second year I've been in front of council to thank you for this resolution, and it makes me really proud to be a Southfield resident that we recognize that this is an issue that's not a political one. It's an issue that all of us need to keep in the front of our minds because it's not just the major occurrences like Stoneman Douglas High School or Columbine. It's every day, and it happens every day in Southfield, and it happens every day in Detroit, and all over the country. This is something we have to stop from being normal, that people are shot accidentally, randomly. People are not for shooting, and this is what we're here to ask your remembrance of June as Gun Violence Awareness Month. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much.
Mr. President?
Yes, Mr. Mandelbaum.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the joint resolution, Wear Orange Light Up Southfield Day.
Support.
Been moved by Mr. Mandelbaum, supported by Ms. Taylor, that we approve the joint resolution on Wear Orange Light Up on Southfield Day. Now, are there any questions? All those in favor? Any opposed? Resolution is approved.
Thank you, council, and we certainly appreciate the work that Moms Demand Action is doing. Sadly, there's way too much gun violence in America. Our next resolution is Alzheimer and Brain Awareness Month for June 2019, and I would like to call up Shanice Foot Van. She was here. All right. Well, we have... whereas, this is a joint resolution, and the council president has asked me to read it to save a little time. Whereas, Alzheimer's disease is the sixth leading cause of death and affects millions of people daily. And whereas, Alzheimer's disease is the most common cause of dementia, a general term for memory loss and other cognitive disability serious enough to interfere with daily life. And whereas, Alzheimer's disease is a progressive disease where dementia symptoms gradually worsen over time. On average, a person with Alzheimer's disease lives four to eight years after the diagnosis, but can live as long as 20 years depending on other factors. And whereas, early signs of Alzheimer's include misplacing items, inability to plan or solve problems, difficulty remembering things that just happened, mood and personality changes, struggling with conversations and trouble completing familiar or simple tasks. Whereas, Alzheimer's disease is not a normal part of aging. However, the greatest risk factor is increased age. Whereas, Alzheimer's Association of Greater Michigan Chapter is on a mission to end Alzheimer's disease by spreading awareness and raising funds to help with advanced research. On June 21st, that's this Friday, the Summer Solstice, the day with the most light, thousands of people around the world will come together to fight darkness of Alzheimer's disease by participating in fundraising activities to increase the light and dim the darkness of Alzheimer's. Whereas, purple is recognized as the official color of Alzheimer's movement, and people are encouraged to wear purple all month long to show their support for those affected by the disease. Now therefore be it resolved that we, the mayor and council city of Southwood, county of Oakland, state of Michigan, do hereby declare June 2019 Alzheimer and Brain Awareness Month in the city of Southwood.
All right. Thank you very much.
Mr. President?
Mr. Mandelbaum.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the joint resolution, Alzheimer's and Brain Awareness Month.
Support.
Then properly moved and seconded that we approve the joint resolution for Alzheimer's Awareness Month. And are there any questions? All those in favor? Are there any opposed? All right, it is approved.
I'll make sure that the Alzheimer's Association of Oakland-Macomb get the resolution, but also I'm asking City Cable to change the orange lights on City Hall starting Friday through the weekend in support of the Alzheimer's Association.
Okay.
And then we have one more joint resolution, and I don't believe anybody is here. This is a countywide effort, and perhaps you've noticed the signs on the doors. We're celebrating the 100th anniversary of the ratification of the 19th Amendment of the U.S. Constitution, giving women the right to vote. Whereas, women of every race, class, and ethnic background across America have made historic contributions to the growth and strength of the United States in countless recorded and unrecorded ways. And whereas, women of this nation initiated the most significant women's movement in history, the need for women's suffrage. And whereas, despite the strong opposition, the inspiration and determination of women nationwide brought about the extraordinary accomplishments of the right for women to vote. And whereas, on June 10th, 1919, Michigan women cast their vote when Michigan voters ratified the 19th Amendment to the U.S. Constitution. Whereas, the state of Michigan was the second state to ratify the 19th Amendment, giving women the right to vote. Very progressive of us. And whereas, on August 26th, 1920, voters across the nation secured the right for women to vote when the 19th Amendment to the Constitution of the United States was ratified, empowering American women and declaring for the first time that they, like men, deserve all the rights and responsibilities of citizenship, stating, "The rights of citizens of the United States to vote shall not be denied or abridged by the United States or by any state on account of gender." And whereas, on August 26th, 2020, we'll make the 100th anniversary at the passage of National Suffrage Amendment, the 19th Amendment to the U.S. Constitution guaranteeing the right of women to vote. Now therefore be it resolved that we, the mayor and council city of Southwood, remember and celebrate this historic... the historic women who fought for their right to vote and recognize the courage and inspiration of these bold women to change the course of history. Now therefore be it resolved that the mayor and council city of Southwood will fly the 19th Amendment victory flag on June 10th through June 14th to commemorate the state of Michigan ratifying the 19th Amendment. And on August 20th, or 24th, 2020, to August 28th, 2020, we'll fly that again to commemorate the ratification. And it's signed by myself and the city council.
Very good. Thank you.
Also, some more, Mr. Chairman?
Support.
It's been moved by Mr. Pakasi, supported by Ms. Taylor, that we approve the joint resolution of the 100th anniversary of the ratification of the 19th Amendment to the Constitution. Are there any questions? All those in favor? Any opposed? That would not be...
My nine grandchildren have votes.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Appreciate that. Next, we have a presentation from Southfield Northwood Club of Toastmasters International.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, City Council. For the audience, my name is Michael Mannion, Community Relations Director for the city. It's my pleasure tonight to introduce to you members of Southwoods-Northwood Club of Toastmasters International. Community Relations met with the group a couple of months ago on an effort to help them to further promote their cause and their organization. I'm happy to say we were able to put out a press release on their behalf and get some extensive media coverage, particularly a nice article in the Southfield Sun, as well as some other publications. They wanted to come before you tonight just to share a little bit more about the organization and their mission. They also did prepare some additional information for our elected officials I'll give to our city clerk, and with that I'll turn it over to Captain President.
Thank you very much. Well, it could be 9:30 or 11:30, we would be here. I'm Bruce Tabashnik, and I'm president of Northwood Toastmasters, which is Southfield's Toastmaster Group. And we... there are other Toastmaster Groups around, but we've been the longest Toastmaster Group meeting. We're a public nonprofit. We meet at Northwood... we meet at Kirby's Coney Island, just down the street. But our goal is to help people speak. People who are afraid to speak, people who are angry, people who are sad, but to help people speak concisely, articulately, and most importantly, enthusiastically. It's my pleasure to introduce Ron Meyer, who is one of the longest members of Toastmasters in the state of Michigan, and he's gonna tell you a little bit about what we do.
Thank you, Bruce. Mr. Mayor, fellow council members. I joined Toastmasters approximately 45 years ago, and I probably learned the maximum I would get out of my speaking ability in maybe the first three years. But I stayed with it because I enjoy helping other people. I've taught public speaking in the Berkeley School District. I really don't feel that you can get as good a training as we get at Northwood. We tried, but Northwood was far superior. What we've been able to do with a vast variety of people coming in, we have a diversity of members that have come through the doors over the years, and successes. Mary Ellen Stempel, who sits as the chair for the Wayne County Community College Board of Directors, started out before she was elected with Northwood Toastmasters. We've had three people run for state rep, one serving until she was termed out. We have many business leaders. One of our alumnus represented his industry, giving testimony in Washington before Congress. Many business professionals. We have authors who've been successful, award-winning authors, artists. We've been able to help a lot of people. And with that, the way we do it is friendly, community-based, helping each other. We have a program that people give a speech, then we critique them, not only in what they need to do right or to improve it, but in what they're doing right that they want to keep. There's many things that Toastmasters can do to help people improve. I'm gonna use just one man as an example. Chuck's wife asked me if we could help him because he couldn't get a full-time job, and when I spoke to him, the man looked at his feet, he mumbled, and he spoke in syllables. In a short period of time, there was much improvement. He ended up being a regional manager for the company he worked for. He advanced through that, and when the company shut down, the company that bought out his division hired him to become a trainer. And it's one of our problems with membership. We get too successful. He had to move to Dallas, Texas to take that job. We've been able to help people, and we look forward to doing it in the future. Dan Stewart has been doing some of the work with us. He's been one of our presidents, and Dan will follow me in the presentation. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor and council. I don't have quite the longevity that Ron does. I've been in the club since 1996, and by my math, that's 23 years. I've learned a lot in that timeframe. A lot of what Ron talked about was lacking from my skill set in public speaking, let's say, and I needed it desperately. About three or four months ago, I heard on national public radio a young lady give her best testimonial. She lost her place on a number of occasions. She sat there mute, silent, which is, as you all know in radio, a killer. So the host gave her a little help. He says, "No, you just, you know, you'll collect your thoughts," and he says, "You're very courageous for doing this." And he continued with her until she found her footing again, and she began to recite what it was she came there to speak about. And he told her that what she was doing was banking courage. That's what we do in Toastmasters, it dawned on me. When we stand in front of an audience, the first time we're paralyzed. Fear is gripping us, sweat on our palms, our forehead. We're banking courage for the next time we stand in front of that group. And this nurturing group that I belong to has brought us along to the point of being quite comfortable in front of an audience. This would have paralyzed me years ago. And with that in mind, about 12 or 13 years ago, I joined the Oakland Literacy Council to help facilitate the growth and development of non-native English-speaking individuals. One of those individuals joined our Toastmasters Club. His name is Amir Derudian, and he is a wonderful friend of mine, joined our club, and I think a good example of what this club can offer individuals. With that, Amir Derudian.
Thank you, Dan. Honored Mayor, honored council. When I moved here in 2009 to the U.S., I was lucky enough to meet with Mr. Stewart. He introduced me to the Northwood Toastmaster Club. Since then, I found a golden environment that I can improve my public skills, and also we have evaluator, we have grammarian, we have word of the week, and every week I learn a better opportunity that this Toastmaster provide me.
This is a small sample of our group. We know you're very busy. We're concluded for tonight. We need your help to get more members and let people know that we're able to help people, especially people who are shy, tongue-tied, or people that want to make an impact, but they just can't get the words out. All they have to do is look on the website that we'll be supplying and come to our meetings. Are there any questions?
Counsel?
Yeah, Mr. Frazier?
You said you meet at Kirby Coney Island. When do you meet? Do they just... people just show up and wait till you come in?
No, we meet... we're one of the few clubs that we're so conscientious, we meet every week, except during the summer where we meet every other week. But we start our meeting exactly at 6:30, and we usually go to 8:00 or 8:30. And it's every week, Thursday, at Kirby's world-famous Coney Island. We have dinner, and then we have speakers, we have evaluations.
At 6:30 in the evening?
It's 6:30 in the evening.
Is there a cost?
Yes, there's a minimal cost for the meals, and there's also a cost for Toastmasters. All people have to do is call our number, and we'll fill them in. People can come for free, you know, as long as they want to, as long as they order off the menu from Kirby's as part of our group.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Mr. Brightwell?
And we would like to get involved with the Martin Luther King celebration and any other activities that you think would be good, where we could help Southfield residents have the opportunity to see how much fun and easy it is to improve their public speaking.
Mr. Brightwell?
How long is your membership?
People belong for various lengths of time. We have one of... many people are there for many years. Some people are there for six months or a year. But we have a curriculum that we help people complete, and there's a series of speeches that people give, and that can take anywhere from a year to two years. But some people are involved for a shorter period. It's really up to the individual.
Okay. Okay. Thank you very much.
Got one more, Mr. Mayor.
Bruce, on Saturday, I spoke to a group of high school students who are in a learning network program with Torch of Wisdom Foundation in Southfield, and it would seem to me that they could benefit. They do skills for young people to excel in business or in school, and I don't know if you're willing to... I can make the connection and the introduction to the folks at the Torch of Wisdom. It's affiliated with the Delta Sigma Theta Sorority in Southfield. They have a building at Nine Mile and Losher. Sounds like it could be a way to recruit some members as well as do some good community networking.
Well, thank you. I'll give you a call tomorrow and get the information. In my spare time, I'm a school social worker, and I love working with children, and especially children that have something to say, and most of them do, and we can help them speak more appropriately.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you again for coming. We appreciate it.
I did just want to add that there is more information on the city's website, citiesouthfield.com. If you go under News and Events, you can find a press release about that we referenced earlier for the Toastmasters, has more information on all of their programs, their meeting schedule, as well as a link to their website. Thank you.
All right. Very good. Thank you again for coming this evening. Next, we'll move on to the minutes.
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Brightwell?
I move that we approve the minutes. amended regular minutes of February 20... February 15. Also, item B, committee of the whole meeting minutes of May 16, 2019. Item C, the regular meeting minutes of May 20, 2019. Committee of the whole meeting minutes of May 30, 2019. Committee of the whole meeting minutes of June 3, 2019.
Support. Been moved by Mr. Brightwell, supported by Mr. Frazier, that we approve the amended meeting minutes from February 15. Committee of the whole meeting minutes from May 16. Regular meeting minutes from May 20. Committee of the whole meetings from May 30, and committee of the whole meeting minutes from June 3. Are there any questions? All those in favor? Are there any opposed? All right. Moving on to the consent agenda.
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Mandelbaum?
I'd like to move that we approve consent agendas, items A through H.
Support.
It's been moved by Mr. Mandelbaum, supported by Ms. Taylor, that we approve consent agenda items A through H. Are there any questions? All those in favor? Are there any opposed? All right.
Did we put the...
That was H.
Okay.
All right. Moving on to the public hearing. Shelley, come on up.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, honorable council. Tonight, I'm here to discuss Trucklight. We have two items that they're seeking support for. The first is their application for their industrial facilities exemption certificate, and the second is their brownfield redevelopment plan and tax increment financing plan, as well as a development and reimbursement agreement for Trucklight. We have a short presentation followed by... we'd like to hold two separate public hearings and seek approval after each one. So at this time, I'd like to invite representatives from Trucklight to come forward. Mike from PM Environmental is gonna share a short presentation.
Good evening. I'm happy to be able to public speak and hearing about the other public speaking people. So I did present this at the working session a couple weeks ago, and I think it was pretty well-received. I'm gonna go over it in pretty fast order, just in light of time. This is a rendering of the proposed facility. It's gonna be a headquarters for a company that has 3,000 employees. They're relocating from another state, which I think is favorable to both the state of Michigan and obviously the state of South... or the city of Southfield, the county of Oakland. So I got ahead of myself. They make a lot of cool stuff, 17,000 finished good parts, 10,000 or 10 manufacturing plants worldwide, a million square feet of manufacturing, a lot of kind of aftermarket or as part of original equipment, lighting apparatus for the trucking industry. They like Southfield. Everything that Southfield has to offer is why they selected here, so you as council people are doing a great job to attract a business like this. I'm here primarily to talk about the environmental conditions that warrant the brownfield request for tax increment financing. This was a former, although it looks like pretty green grass, you'd be surprised at the history that was here. It was a former research laboratory and former maintenance garages. There was a number of underground storage tanks. There was maintenance occurred, and all kinds of different exotic chemicals over time were used a long time ago, and then they demoed the building, removed the tanks, and got it looking a little bit more favorable. But as a result of those past activities, there's residual contamination, and there's unsuitable soils that are gonna require engineered site preparation for the foundations and the footings to support the new structure. The industrial facilities tax exemption freezes the taxes for 50% of their value for 12 years. The brownfield tax increment finance reimbursement on the eligible expenses through the new taxes generated, so the city never loses any of their base, only the increased amount until they collect all those eligible expenses which are outlined in the plan. And again, this assists the level in the playing field between brownfield and greenfield, and although that looks like a greenfield, it is a greenfield. Its history makes it not so green, and there's a lot of under... it not so green, and there's a lot of underground legacy issues that need to be dealt with. The industrial facilities tax exemption amounts to $25,000 to $28,000 a year. The brownfield tax increment financing program is over 22 years, and that's to collect roughly 1.4, 1,446,330. I noticed earlier, we get down to the cents here at city council, so I better read that out, not just say just under 1.5. A number of site specifics, there's chlorinated solvents and accedence of a non-residential vapor cleanup criteria that requires a vapor barrier. There's a lot of contaminated soil and groundwater management to facilitate utilities, foundations, and reworking the site. That's, that's approximately $310,000. Demolition activities account for a lot of other removal of existing infrastructure that's in place that need to be removed or replaced with a new infrastructure. The site prep, which includes the special foundation work due to the soils, is almost half of this. It's $714,700. So unless you're just going to keep it a grass field or a parking lot, you would need to invest quite a bit to support a, a structure. Brownfield plan preparation is $20,000, and there's a contingency of 182,880, which I would like to think at construction cost, kind of at a premium right now, that they do not peak out any higher, and that we do not need to use that contingency. However, history has proved that we need these. This is a corporate headquarters, 48,000 square feet, 45,000 of office and 3,000 of a demonstration space. They're largely selling to the automotive, so they want to have a place that they can come and feel how they make their product. Customer employee training and product demonstrations, one to two, three vehicles per month that will be highlighted at the facility. Building capacity of 150 employees, so that's 30 initially here, so we hope they increase by five times to have 95 people, and that would be great. So, the, the one-year headcount is 12 to 20. Hours of operation are 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM. And there we have it. Questions?
Thank you so much.
We need to open up for the public hearing then.
Exactly. So, again, so the first item that's listed on the agenda is the application for the industrial facilities exemption certificate. In February 27, 2017, the city council approved the district. So that was put in place when we had done a prior project for this whole area. We did a, a different tax abatement, so the district's in place. So at this time, we're looking to put their request for the 12-year abatement in the district, and that's what we're seeking support for. So that's what the public hearing, the first public hearing is for.
All right. I'd like to open up the public hearing for the first item, the application for industrial facilities exemption certificate.
Pamela Gerald, PO Box 155, Southfield, Michigan, 48037-0155. My telephone number is 248-346-0439. I've got a couple of questions. And after, I would appreciate the petitioner and possibly Shelley and the appropriate administration to address my questions. If I looked up there correctly, the time for this brownfield was 22 years, as opposed to 12 years, and the amount of 1,446,330. I'd like clarification. Is it 22 years for 1.4 million, or 12 years for 1.4 million? What is the community benefit? We hear a lot of these companies coming in asking for a tax abatement or brownfield, and then we talk about community benefit. Not community benefit meaning support something that the city does. We're talking about neighborhood, resident, community benefit. What are you looking to do for us, the residents and the taxpayers, who are really the backbone of the city of Southfield? Now, you did explain about the fact that this was contaminated property, and you had all of the specs up there, and you even showed the picture with the vacant property. What I notice in the grass is that the birds are feeding there. So is this property really contaminated? And until they get this built, should we be concerned about wildlife, feeding, running, scooping up the grass on such contaminated property? Should we put some kind of net or barrier over it so the birds won't be on this contaminated property? These are just some of the things that I'm really, really concerned about. It's nice to come into a city and provide a wonderful business and jobs, but if you come into the city and you're not about the people in the city, and you're only about the administration, to me, that's when it's a problem. So I'm hoping that your community effort will be great, to the point that you would be a great corporate citizen for the residents and not just for administration, giving to the mayor's this, or the city's this, or the art fund, or anything like that. We've got some other concerns that we need to be concerned about from a residential standpoint. I will compliment you on one thing. I like the colors, the brown, the taupe, and the red. Those happen to be my color schemes. But other than that, I just want you to be concerned and be mindful that the residents are at the top of the organizational chart, and they work for us.
This is, the public hearing is still open. If there's any other individuals here that would like to speak to this matter, please come forward.
12 years or 22 years?
Yes. While we're talking about giving tax abatements to new businesses coming in, we should talk about giving some abatements to people who are already here. We got some new owners of the Reynolds Building, and we're talking about turning that into the Judge Damon Keefe African-American Resource Center. We got a lot of people joining us on this, a lot of black businesses. We're going to house inside that building all the African-American organizations. And I'm hoping that saying that, that this building get the same tax abatements, and Terry Crow back off on trying to steal this building from these African-American owners. That's all I want to say. You can give it to them, make sure that y'all tell Terry Crow, planning and code enforcement to back off this building, because there's some heavy hitters coming in.
Mr. Harris, can you state your name and address for the record for the public hearing, please?
All RACs and life matter, PO Box 2679, zip code 48033. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Public hearing is still open. If there's any other individuals that'd like to speak to this item, please come forward. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Counsel, did you have any questions?
I would just like to clarify for the public that this first public hearing was for the 12-year abatement for the industrial facilities tax exemption. Again, when Trucklight came to the city originally, most of the communities there, it is very competitive, and we do need to offer some sort of incentives to attract companies to our area. This was the original form of attraction that we were using. Once they got into the property, they discovered that there was some contamination under the soil, and so that's when the brownfield came forward. So the first item that this public hearing was for the tax abatement.
Yes, Mr. Frazier?
No, don't.
When you build a building, is, is the building going to be a green building?
I don't know that it's going to be a LEED-certified building. I don't think it will be LEED, but I mean, it will be all the latest.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not suggesting that it has to be completely LEED-certified, but are you going to have some green aspects to it?
You know, I'm, I'm not an architect, I'm, I'm an environmental engineer. I can speak to the, the green grass that, there's actually 10 inches of topsoil that's covering the old legacy site. So the reason the grass is so green is there's 10 inches that we do plan to test, and if it's, has no residual, we're going to scrape it and repurpose it and recycle it, which is very green. And the whole essence of a brownfield, of using existing infrastructure so that we don't have to go to vacant land and bring in new storm sewer and water, that's what the whole basis of brownfield incentives are, is to encourage that, instead of going to North Oakland County, or North Macomb County, or Livingston County. So that, that really in itself is green.
But this is a high-tech research and development facility, and they have been to council before, and I don't know if, Mike, you have any additional information to speak to the actual development of the building?
Yeah, as comes to the development of the building, it will not be a LEED-certified building. There will be many green aspects of it when it comes to the HVAC system and the insulation rating of this building. A lot of the current Michigan codes that we will be adhering to will cover most of those green aspects of a building, but it will not be LEED-certified.
Yeah, there are a lot of things that, you know, come to mind, gray water, using gray water, and other, you know, the building material itself that lends itself to the problems that we're developing, we're, we're causing in the earth, so.
Correct, yeah. We will not be using, you know, the gray water, or there won't be any solar or any other aspects like that that will be ever due. We will have retention, absolutely.
Okay, thanks.
Anything else, counsel?
Mr. Chairman, I'm ready for motion.
I'll accept the motion.
I'd like to approve the application for industrial facilities tax exemption certificate filed by Trucklight Company LLC.
Support.
It's been moved by Mr. Focassi, supported by Mr. Mandelbaum, that we approve the industrial facilities exemption certificate application from Trucklight Company. Are there any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you so much. So the second public hearing is to address the brownfield redevelopment plan. And again, the, the dollars, that 14, the 1.4 million dollars will be the cost to incur for the cleanup and the related expenses. And so the company will be able to capture a portion of their taxes back each year over that 22-year timeframe to reimburse them for their investment in cleaning up and relocating their facility in our community. And I do just want to touch on that we have had several meetings with the owners of the company. They're very excited to work with our Southfield Public School District, with Lawrence Technological University, and other schools in the area to help bring those students in, to tour the facility, to be potential interns, potential future employees. They plan on working with Southfield Michigan Works to do job fairs, to, you know, hire locally. So that's all part of their plan, and they're very excited. That's the reason why they came to our area, and they're very excited to be part of our community.
I'd like to open up the public hearing. This is in regard to the brownfield redevelopment plan and tax increment financing plan for Trucklight Company. If anyone would like to speak to this matter, please come forward, give your name and address for the record, and you have three minutes.
Pamela Gerald, PO Box 155, Southfield, Michigan, 48037-0155. My telephone number is 248-346-0439. I just want to go back to 1996, when we passed the ordinance that allowed these tax abatements in brownfields to come into motion. I think it was 1997 when we gave the very first one. We gave Lear a 20- or 30-year capture tax deal that turns out to be longer than the time that we gave due to the market crashing and the property value going down. So I want, again, clarification. Is this the 22-year deal? Is this the longest capture tax deal we've ever done? If so, why? Is there anything put in place that if they don't stay here for the 22 years, that we will be able to recoup our money? Once again, in the past, we had a company, Aerosmith, that left before their abatement period was done, and the city attorney at the time, may he rest in peace, chose for whatever reason not to go after this company and recoup Southfield's taxes that they did not get. So I really want you to address those issues, and I still want to know what the community benefit is. I'm getting a bit annoyed when some of these petitioners come up, and they've been prompted by Shelley to use all the correct buzzwords, workforce, community, hire Southfield, all the things that you guys like to hear to give a yes vote. But Shelley's entire career here, we have never, ever, and Jeremy Moss asked for it, several council people in the past have asked for an update on these projects. So for this particular one, how many Southfield residents did you hire? The community benefit. I don't know that she's ever provided that information, and I know I've asked for it, and I've asked for it her entire career here. So if you're going to keep on giving these things out, and she's going to be able to talk about the community benefit of Southfield workforce, hiring Southfield residents, and blah-da-da-da-dah, all the right buzzwords to get the rubber stamp, it's only fair to us, the residents, and the people that do pay taxes, that you go back and ask her when they open up, a year or two later. What is the prognosis now? How many Southfield residents did you hire? How many came from the workforce? We just need to be kept abreast with all of these agreements, because we have not been doing it at all.
Public hearing is still open. For any other individuals that would like to speak to this matter, please come forward, give your name and address for the record. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Focassi.
I move for the brownfield redevelopment plan and tax increment financing plan, the reimbursement agreement.
Support.
It's been moved by Mr. Focassi and supported by Mr. Frazier that we approve the brownfield redevelopment and tax increment financing plan for Trucklight Company. Are there any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? All right, motion passes.
Thank you so much. I would just like to make a couple of clarifications. All of the projects that come before city council must sign an agreement that is crafted by our city attorney, that if the company were to leave our city prior to the life of their agreement, that they would reimburse the city for what is owed to us. We have not had, during the time of my employment here, had any company that has not reimbursed the city based on whatever our agreement was with them. So we've, we've definitely followed through with that. As well, if the company were to leave prior to the 22 years, obviously it's based on their tax capture, so they wouldn't be getting those resources back that they would stay with the city. So I just wanted to clarify that, and thank you so much for your time tonight.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to thank these principals for choosing Southfield to have their business. It's going to be a real attraction.
Very good.
One other thing, too, is that we have in the past had a business that closed and moved out of town, I think it was a welding company that asked for a tax abatement.
Capital Welding, that's correct.
Yes, that closed and went out of town, and we did it, asked for their money back, we got it, so it works.
We didn't get Aerosmith.
Thanks.
Thanks, Shelley.
Thank you.
All right. Next, we'll move to our communications portion of the meeting. First request for communications is Pamela Gerald.
Good evening again. I think the residents by now know who I am. I just wanted to say that not only is June the all-timers awareness month and the 100th anniversary of the ratification of the 19th Amendment, June is also Juneteenth month. And it was probably an oversight on the mayor's part that he forgot to include Juneteenth in the proclamation resolution section for his presentations. Juneteenth is also referred to as Black Independence Day. Lincoln freed the slaves with the Emancipation Proclamation in 1863. Because the plantation owners continued to exploit black labor, they did not let them know that they were freed by that document. It wasn't until two years later, on June 19, 1865, that General Gordon Granger went into Gavistin, Texas with the troops to. into Gavistin, Texas, with the troops to say that you have been freed. So, even though we have this document, you can tell and chart throughout the years that it hasn't really been a total freedom, uh, total freedom or independence for African-Americans. So, I'm going to urge this city council and the mayor, since it was an oversight, to do a proclamation or resolution for Juneteenth, honoring Juneteenth and what it stands for. People understand, that know about Juneteenth, that red, black, and green are very powerful colors for that Juneteenth celebration. Red represents the blood that unites all the people. Black talks about the affirmation of the existence of the flag, and the green is the abundance of natural wealth for Africa. So, in doing that, Mike Mannion needs to prepare a press release announcing Juneteenth. If we can do it for a group coming here for Toastmasters, meeting at Kirby's, we can certainly do it for something that's historic to the African-American people, considering and seeing that Southfield is predominantly African-American. To do so would be a disservice to all of us blacks that are in the city, and to all of you up there. So, I'm hoping that you seriously consider and make this happen. Happy Juneteenth, people.
Yeah, Ms. Taylor?
Ms. Gerald?
Yes.
Uh, I, you just, uh, beat me to the punch, I should say. I already asked for a resolution for Juneteenth.
Great minds think alike.
That, that will be forthcoming, but thank you for your comments.
I appreciate it. Great minds think alike.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Our next request for commu-, uh, recognition is Gerard Mullin.
Good evening. My name is Gerard Mullin, Southfield Citizens Oversight Committee, Post Office Box 155, Southfield, Michigan, 48037. Mr. Chairman, at the last regular council meeting on June the third, you, Mr. Chairman, stopped my wife Pamela Gerald from finishing her presentation during public comment. You used as your legal authority the rules or procedure printed on the agenda. I believe these rules are bogus. Here's why I believe these rules are bogus. The headings, the heading sentence for the rules state, and I quote, "The Southfield City Council has established the following rules or procedure for all speakers," unquote. My question to you, Mr. Chairman, is how established? Previous rules or procedure were established by ordinance. I don't recall any ordinance attached to these rules, Mr. Chairman. Can you tell me which ordinance number was assigned to these rules? Also, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to remind you of Section 4.19 of the City Charter entitled "Ordinance Enactment," and I quote, "All legislation of the City of Southfield shall be by ordinance," unquote. Mr. Chairman, again, what is your ordinance number for your rules or procedure, or are your rules bogus? That is, made up behind closed doors and violation of the Open Meetings Act? Now, assuming these rules are not bogus, they still don't apply to my wife on June third, and here's why. The rules prohibit, and I quote, "Personal or impertinent attacks upon any officer, employee, or city council member or other elected official," unquote. Mr. Chairman, my wife didn't attack any officer, employee, or city council member, or other elected official, did she? If she did, can you name him or her? And second, the second rule states, and I quote, "No person shall use threatening abusive language or hate speech when addressing the city council," unquote. I believe that the second rule didn't apply to my wife on June the third. Thank you.
Our next request for recognition is Sonia Simpson Gardner. Our next request for recognition is Gregory Keeler.
Greg Keeler, twenty-five, one-seven-zero, Circle Drive. I think it was nice to date that we had the Toastmasters here, because sometimes I wonder, by me coming here, speaking, and not cussing, and not swearing, and not calling by anybody by any negative names, I'm not hurt. But I listen, I look at people, they come up here and they curse and everything else. There seems to be some type of action taken for them. And it makes me kind of wonder, okay, are you setting a agenda saying I should come up here and act that way to get something done? And I've been coming here for so long, and even after getting, um, papers for you from the city, my street, Circle Drive, in the P, where it's all purple, means those houses do not have sewer lines. Everything around it is green. We're Phase Two. Phase Three has been done and halfway done. So, how did y'all skip finishing Phase Two, to go into Phase Three and be almost halfway done through it? How much, how much of that money have y'all burnt up, twelve, the thirty-three million dollars that was bonded to you, and how much is left? It says ninety-seven percent of connections have been said, done. We ain't. So, how did you get to ninety-seven? I have spoken to everybody below you, everybody below you, when I started asking them questions, pretty much, they kind of agree with me. But when it comes to this body, it's a whole nother thing. There's no movement, there's no anything, and I've been saying this connection is wrong, it should have been done right. Now, are you giving the middle finger to Circle Drive? Why are you giving it to Lawrence Tech? Because Lawrence Tech told you what they wanted to do, and there was no sewer line put in there for them. And in the green, all their property had to go back towards Lawrence Tech in order to be able to be sewer lined, which I think is improper to Lawrence Tech. And that's why I asked, are you giving them the middle finger, us? But y'all being very, very rude far as I'm concerned to us, and improper, and I think it's just ridiculous that you asked us to vote for y'all? And then when we come forward with problems and/or issues, this is what we get from you? Or we get three minutes and then sit up, sit down and shut up? But you need a vote to be up there in that chair. I think this is totally wrong. And when you ask if things are green, yes, they got to be made green. You cannot buy incandescent light bulbs anymore automatically. You cannot buy inefficient air conditioning systems. You must buy buildings with higher-
The time is, time is up, Mr.-
So, that's a ridiculous question.
Our next request for recognition is Stacy Jackson.
Long night. Good evening. Stacy Jackson, two-one-six-eight-five, Verushua Drive, Southfield, Michigan, four-eight-zero-three-three. A few weeks ago, I sat in the audience and observed a city council person say something that was beautifully profound. It was actually Councilman Mandelbaum, where he said that we don't have racism in Southfield, and that there is no racism in Southfield. Well, I'm inclined to ask through the chair to Councilman Mandelbaum, to whom were you speaking, and on whose behalf do you speak? You see, the city has been showing selective processes in its policies. When you have reports throughout the Sun Magazine with our mayor and other city officials gleefully posing in front of hundreds of pieces of work that they've retrieved from Southfield Northlands Mall, and yet, a popular piece from a black artist remains next door, thrown on top of a shelf, exposed to direct sunlight, like it's an oversized greeting card thrown in your closet from the in-law you don't like. That's selective. When you have, um, small minority business owner purchase a hookah bar, and soon thereafter, week after week, month after month, they're hit with fines and codes, so much so where they just feel harassed, and yet, the white business owner that they purchased it from was in operation for five years with the same blight, the same codes, the same permits or like thereof, without incident. That's selective. When the city takes the hand of a white resident and guides them through a guided pathway to obtain a consent agreement to own and operate a commercial charter bus, uh, charter bus company that sits five feet away from the Rouge River, yet drags the Buddha's temple through code enforcement and zoning for almost a year to be five hundred feet away from the same river. That's selective. See, the city's selective processes is becoming dangerously symbolic of racism. I refuse to believe that we can have a code enforcement director that has a doctorate degree, as does our mayor, as does our council president, and all these professional folks here. What we don't lack is intellect to make change. What you all lack is courage. Courage to say that Southfield is not perfect. It is not a make-believe city in Marvel Town somewhere with an impenetrable force field around it, where societal ills don't penetrate it, or that racism was not born, raised, and executed right here in Southfield. Please wake up.
Our next request for recognition is Keith Harris.
All races and life matter, P.O. Box twenty-six, I mean, um, zip code twenty-six seventy-nine, P.O. Box four-eight-zero-three-three. You guys are in a lot of trouble. I'm looking at our black art. It's, do you know it's Black Music Month also? Our black artists threw away. I've watched everybody give out little red toothpicks for this racist red pole park. This is, this is Confederate Park. Now, I'm not going to stick too much on that, but I am very ashamed to know that you can put your picture in a book next to my hero. This is my hero. But you show us no respect while you feature your picture in our hero book. Now, let's get to the other point here. Baron should be the police chief. He gave the best interview. He runs a city like Detroit. I was with over three hundred police officers of all races Thursday. We FOIA'd the city for a copy of the videotape. We want that to go viral. We also want other professional law enforcement agencies to see this video. Also, I want to say, Mandelbaum, you don't speak for me as a black man, or any of the African-American people. There's a lot of racism in Southfield. I just heard your whole community, you know, you're going to get lights, you're going to get this, but here you want to turn schools into condos and overcrowd black communities, Southfield black communities. You want, you want to take our quiet black communities and overcrowd them while your segregated schools, your segregated communities enjoy their quiet and peace. It's not right. It's not right. I don't have a racist bone in my body, but I will fight against racism with my life. I'm willing to die, whatever it takes. Nobody's taking my home. I'm not going to be forced to tie in, knowing that the white man who owned my house should have tied in before me. Enough is enough. What are you guys waiting for? Do you know people are dying today because our politicians and nobody's helping? Homegrown terrorism is happening every day, because people are not listening. Your community is in a lot of pain. Your city's in a lot of pain. I just met a white lady the other day, said, "I just took the money out of my 401K, because I didn't want a lien put on my property." She said, "I probably won't even live long enough to spend my 401K, so I just paid for it myself, just so the mayor won't steal my property." That's exactly what she said, and she was white. Thank you.
Our next request for recognition is Sarah Haybo.
Good evening. Um, I just have a few topics that I wanted to discuss. One is, uh, my neighbor, Mr. Parrish, still has an issue with the detention pond that is behind the Henry Ford Optimize, and there's been a significant amount of rain. It has not gone down at all. In fact, it's gotten much deeper. I have photos on my phone. And recently, there was a case of West Nile in Oakland County. And because that water is stagnant, that's a risk now for my neighbors. And that's something that the city has to do something about. We can't just let that remain, um, a place where mosquitoes can lay their eggs and then hatch in our community. People can't go out in their backyards, maintain their yards, or even spend time in their backyards. Um, second thing is, why can't all of our city council meetings be televised like tonight's was? The entire meeting, from the beginning to the very end, where people get to hear your discussions about why you make decisions on camera, so that if they have questions, they can ask you about the specific things you've said on camera. Um, and then, the last thing, actually, I have two more things. The servers were compromised, and you said that was an issue with Cisco. Was any resident information compromised, and if there was, will residents be made aware of this issue? And how will they be made aware of this issue? Um, and then, the last thing I wanted to discuss, the Southfield Nonprofit Housing Corporation, the members of that body are, one, Mr. Mandelbaum, the mayor, and Mr. Zorn. Uh, they have executive positions, and then they are also on the general body of that, um, corporation. It formerly had City Hall as its address, and now it has, I think it's, uh, the River Place Park Apartment Complex, and the resident agent is also Mr. Zorn. Is there a reason why that quasi-city body is not subject to the Open Meetings Act, and why residents can't attend these general meetings where discussions are made about what houses are going to be purchased? Um, fourteen houses are going to be refused by the city and allowed to be taken by, uh, the Southfield Nonprofit Housing Corporation, and they're going to be purchased, they're paying for it. I understand that. And they're paying, with taxes included, about thirteen thousand seven hundred and eighty-seven dollars and twenty-four cents per house. Where could you buy a house like that? You couldn't. So, that's a concern that I have, is that we're taking these homes, people have lost their homes, we can't verify what homes that are being rehabbed by Habitat for Humanity are actually being put into that program so residents could buy them back. Thank you.
Our next request for recognition was Richard Powell. Our next request was, I can't even read this name, Deborah, I can't, I can't read the last name, but I prob, they're probably not here. I think somebody spoke, signed up for the earlier meeting. Is there a Curvy, Curne, Cornea Brown? Okay. All right then. Well, that concludes the communications portion of the meeting. The council, do you have anything? Mr. Brightwell?
I have some, um, announcements for veterans, and I will be doing this on going forward basis. Um, some of these things, they might be adult-related, and, um, but the VA just recently approved, they will start paying for urban urgent care visits, uh, for veterans. This is all part of the VA, uh, mission of making sure veterans are seen sooner than they, uh, than they used to be. Uh, as of- Uh, as of June sixth, the VA started paying for veterans' visits to urgent, urgent care clinics. This benefits of, is available without, uh, prior authorization from the VA for the treatment of minor injuries, injuries, illnesses, such as flu symptoms, sprains, colds, sore throats, et cetera, the kind of items that are typically, um, addressed by urgent care in walk-in retail clinics. The VA will pay for urgent care claims only if the veteran has, is eligible for VA, VA benefits. And if you don't have your VA card currently, please reach out to the Oakland County Veterans, uh, Services, which can locate it at two-four-eight-six-five-five-one-two-five-zero. The urgent care facilities also has to be authorized and are contracted by the, uh, VA. And everything is, uh, the only service that are excluded would be dental, and, and they have to be, um, an authorized urgent care provider, and I did a, uh, a search for this particular zip code, there, there are seven authorized, uh, providers within five miles of this particular zip code. So, there, there's several places in Southfield where veterans can go and get urgent care without having to, uh, go to the VA Hospital downtown or in, in Ann Arbor. This is a way of, um, uh, speeding up services to veterans. And, um, I will put this, I'll be working with our Veterans Commission, make sure that this particular website, where you can go to find out whether or not there's a website, there's an urgent care near you, you can, you will go to, uh, www.vaa.gov/find, F-I-N-D-dash-locations. Um, I put a couple flyers outside, um, on the desk outside, were the items, but, uh, feel free to, uh, reach out to me, and I can obviously provide this information to you. On a going-forward basis, like I said, I will be working with our Veterans Commission so we can communicate, uh, readily with the veterans. And one other item, and this is where the, the adult side of, uh, healthcare gets involved, the VA is now transplanting kidneys that are positive for hepatitis C. Now, this is a major innovation, and, uh, if you're on a waiting list for a kidney and you are, uh, a veteran, uh, contact the VA and contact your veterans, your primary care individual at the VA. And the director of the VA indicated that, at the VA, we have the ability to quickly adapt, adapt medical advancements almost as soon as they are reported in medical literature. The VA has treated and cured more hepatitis C patients than any other healthcare system in the country. As of March three, uh, twenty nineteen, nearly one sixteen thousand vets started, started hepatitis C medication in the VA, of which ninety-six thousand veterans completed, completed the treatment and have been cured. So, the item is, you should contact your, um, those are some cutting-edge things, that the VA is starting to, um, transplant hepatitis C, uh, infected kidneys, whereas, this might seem a little backwards, but they actually put the, transplant the kidney, and they treat the hepatitis C. This has been proved to be medically, um, advantageous, they can treat hepatitis C, and this allows the veteran to get a kidney, uh, merged sooner. So, um, with that, that is my adult, uh, presentation on medical care for vets.
All right, thank you. Mr. Brightwell, Ms. Taylor.
Yes, thank you. I just wanna say that, uh, I received an email from our, uh, local high schools, Southfield A and T and University, stating that we graduated over a hundred and four students, and the students received scholarships worth more than ten million dollars, and they will be attending universities in and out of the state of Michigan. I thought that was phenomenal. But then they went forward and told me other accomplishments that happened in twenty nineteen. The robotics team, their first robotics twenty nineteen competition winners for the state of Michigan, in the Miss, I'm sorry, the Michigan District. The girls varsity basketball team, which we had right here at our city council meeting, they were our twenty nineteen district champions, regional champions, and state runner-up champions for the Division One in the state of Michigan. All of the choir members that participated in the twenty nineteen State of Michigan solo and ensemble competition earned a Division One rating. The Warrior Innovative Vehicle Design Team placed second in twenty nineteen at the state competition held at Kettering University. The concert band made history by rating Superior for the first time in Michigan State Band and Orchestra, Organization Twenty Nineteen Festival. One step team competed in its first local competition and won first place. And there, there's more, but the one thing that really is impressive to me also is our class of twenty nineteen earned a grand total of twenty million eight hundred seventy-three thousand eight hundred and sixty-eight dollars and seventy-six cents in scholarships, and these scholarships were earned for academic prowess, leadership, service, athletic skills, marching band, and the talents displayed by these gifted in arts, sciences, businesses, and technology. That says a lot about our, our kids as they're growing up in the city of Southfield, and we should commend and congratulate them all. Thank you.
All right. Mr. Mandelbaum.
Mr. Chairman.
Oh, yes.
Go ahead.
Oh, I was just going to, um, let everyone know, now that we're getting close to summer, which starts on Friday, um, and school is out, there's a number of Parks and Rec opportunities for families, for young, for old, um, for everyone to partake in, particularly the Southfield, um, Pool, open on Saturday. Um, you can check out their hours, and you can go swimming if the weather cooperates. Um, we also have Rec on the Move. Parks and Rec will bring different activities to neighborhood parks, so they're coming to, um, many different, um, parks, large and small, in different neighborhoods. Um, it's for children ages five to thirteen, um, Tuesday mornings and Thursday evenings, um, different parks on those specific days. You can call two-four-eight-seven-nine-six-four-six-two-zero, uh, to find out, to get more information, find out those dates that are available, uh, where, where, they will be. Also, we're doing a lot of concerts this summer, besides for the gazebo concerts and Rhythm and Rhyme, we are having Summer in the City, which will start this Friday, right here on the front lawn, between seven and nine PM. Uh, they will have food trucks available, starting at six, if you bring a lawn chair, it's advised. Um, and again, that starts this Friday, June twenty-first. The, the other thing I wanted to mention, this is more for our council, this, earlier this evening, we had our, um, budget adoption, and we talked about, uh, potential savings and things like that, but we keep getting stacks of paper, this thick. Um, back in May of two thousand seventeen, we authorized tablets, um, for about eighteen hundred dollars per elected official. Um, I think, I know that we've talked about going paperless, I know the city clerk is on board with whatever we decide and whenever we decide, but I'd like to bring that conversation back up, um, so we can figure out how to be more green, save some green, um, and, and help us, uh, move into the, into the future with technology. Um, so hopefully, we can have some discussions at a, at a future meeting. Uh, last, but certainly not least, there is a big Parks and Rec event that I forgot. On this Wednesday, from three to seven, come out and play. It's a free event, um, for everyone. They will have inflatables, they'll have a climbing wall, they'll have a zip line. Um, I know that, um, my children are going on the zip line. Unfortunately, we've missed it the last few years, um, because we didn't get there early enough, so I told them we will be in line right at three o'clock. Um, so, if you have some children, grandchildren, friends, neighbors, come out and play this Wednesday from three to seven in front of, in front of Sibby Hall. Thank you very much.
Mr. Ficassi.
Mr. Zorn, I have a request here from a Donald Cuffner, commander of the Southfield VFW Hall. They stopped by the city here, and, uh, what they wanna do is see if there's any way that they can be moving from the present VFW post to Beechwood's. And there's a, and, there's a telephone number here, I don't really know what they're gonna, what they have to use, or, uh, what they, you know, what their agenda is, but, uh, I'd like you to return the call, please. I'll pass it to you. That's all, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Anything else from council? Mr. Mayor?
Good evening once again. Wanted to mention that, uh, we have, uh, reached out to the new owner of the Reynolds Building. Uh, we are interested in having that, uh, building, um, saved and renovated, it's, uh, a historically significant building, um, and, uh, I certainly can't promise these things, but, uh, we are, want to, uh, proceed with historic designation, which could lead to, uh, tax credits, uh, as well as, um, uh, I believe the building would apply, uh, would be applicable for Brownfield. So, uh, I have spoken with Mr. Strather, um, uh, who now has the title to the building. But, uh, on other, um, events, uh, two other events, uh, that Mr. Mandelbaum didn't mention this evening, uh, this, uh, Saturday will be the last, um, uh, until, I think, I think they're skipping, uh, July, but, uh, our active chapter of My Brother's Keeper, uh, will be meeting, uh, this Saturday from eleven, uh, to one-thirty. It's Meal with a Message, uh, and, uh, the, um, meeting will, has moved to the library for the month of June. So, that's, uh, June twenty-second, uh, in the library, eleven to one-thirty, for middle and high school, uh, young men, and, uh, the topic is coding and podcasting, uh, for this month. And, uh, as always, 'cause they're ordering food, they appreciate, um, an RSVP, uh, which can be made, um, by calling two-four-eight-seven-nine-six-four-five-zero-three. Again, that's two-four-eight-seven-nine-six-four-five-zero-three. And then on Sunday, um, is the annual, uh, Garden Walk, the Southfield Parks and Garden Club Garden Walk. Um, the event kicks off at Adler School, that's nineteen-one-hundred Hilton Drive. Um, it goes from, uh, two PM to, uh, three PM, or, I'm sorry, two PM to five PM Sunday, and the focus neighborhood this year is, uh, Southfield Gardens, so it's at Ten Mile and, um, Southfield Road, uh, that neighborhood, and, uh, there are fifteen, uh, yards that will be on display, and, uh, tickets are ten dollars, and a, uh, you can park at Adler School, and, uh, there's a shuttle bus that'll make the complete round of the, um, yards that are on display. So, again, that's Sunday from, uh, uh, two to five PM, uh, starting at Adler School's Southfield Gardens neighborhood. Uh, thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, Mr. Zorn?
I have no items to say.
No items, all right. All right, Madam Attorney.
Thank you, once again, um, through the chair. Um, item A under the Attorney section is, um, my office request to reassign or reclassify Ms. Fitch from Attorney Two to Attorney Three. Um, she is, um, a management employee, but also, the Charter Section, uh, six-point-two, sub-paragraph F, deals with, um, the approval by the honorable body of an assistant whose compensation shall be fixed by the council. Um, I am bringing this forward, Ms. Fitch, um, has been a real team player, and, um, there's, um, a very large discrepancy between, um, her salary and that of her coworkers, the deputy and, um, uh, Ms. Pruitt, uh, almost thirty thousand dollars, and, um, so I, I think it's a, because the work is pretty, um, evenly distributed with the assistants, um, I, I think it's, and given her enthusiasm and her, um, taking on a lot of responsibilities, as I outlined in my letter, that's why I'm making this request. Thank you. And for any, if you have any other questions, I'd be happy to address them on this item.
Any questions, council?
Any motion?
I believe so.
Yeah.
We'll also move the recommendation, um, of resolution, that the council authorize the reclassification of Mrs. Fitch from current position of Attorney Two to Attorney Three classifications.
Support. It's been moved by Mr. Ficassi, supported by Mr. Frazier, that we reassign body Fitch from Attorney Two to Attorney Three.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Brightwell.
I will abstain from, uh, this process, this proceeding right now.
Okay. Any questions?
Is there a reason?
Uh, yes.
Uh, it has to be the financial or, in order to abstain, that's what our, our rule's saying?
Well, I vote no then. Well, I abstain because of personal interaction that, 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 uh, that I did not feel comfortable with.
Okay. Any, any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Are there any opposed?
No.
No? All right. Motion passed.
Thank you.
All right, second item.
Item B, uh, deals with, um, an amendment to one of our ordinances regarding vendor licenses in the city of Southfield. Uh, the current ordinance is contained in Chapter Seventy-two, Section Seven Point Five Four, and, um, the period for the expiration of a license is one year, and I've been working with the clerk's office on this ordinance amendment, as well as the next one. Uh, the clerk's office indicated that sometimes the vendors can be sort of aggressive, and, um, maybe not, they, they don't always identify themselves, so we, um, in conjunction with the clerk's office, uh, we came up with an amendment to the duration of the license. Um, we are recommending, um, that it be changed to ninety days. This was previously in front of your honorable body on May twentieth, uh, two thousand nineteen, last month, and, um, so we're moving this forward for, um, this ordinance change, uh, for your honorable body, and we, uh, there is a resolution in your packet regarding the proposed amendment to the vendor's ordinance.
Madam Court, what is the, um, ordinance number, please?
Fifteen-seventeen.
Fifteen-seventeen.
It's gonna be the...
Existing ordinance, we're just amending the existing ordinance of fifteen-seventeen, which is in the language and, uh, under item B, so it won't be a new ordinance number, we're just gonna be changing, the, matter of fact, the last sentence of the current ordinance in, uh, number fifteen-seventeen, to be reflective of the new time limits.
And move that the vendor's ordinance of the city code, uh, be approved, or the fifteen-seventeen?
Support. It's been properly moved, it's by Mr. Ficassi, supported by Mr. Frazier, that we, um, accept the amendment to ordinance fifteen-seventeen. Are there any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? All right. And now, do we have to do anything else with this now, as an amendment, or?
We have to, we have to introduce the amendment, right?
Yes.
Right. That's what, that's what I was looking for. So, now, it needs to be the same, same, with the same number?
All right, Mr. Chair?
Yep.
I'd like to make a motion that we introduce amendment to ordinance number fifteen-seventeen.
Support.
It's been properly moved by Mr. Mandelbaum, supported by Ms. Taylor, that we introduce ordinance number fifteen-seventeen, the vendor ordinance. Are there any questions? All those in favor? All those in favor?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? The amendment is introduced.
Thank you. And the next item would be under C, which is very similar to the last request. This is an amendment to the duration of the permit under the solicitor's license, which is actually ordinance 1458. Again, similar to the vendor's license. The duration for the solicitor permit is one year currently. In conjunction with the clerk's office, we are requesting that the duration for the permit be reduced to 90 days. And this would be, again, an amendment to the existing ordinance.
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Manalbaum?
I'd like to make a motion that ordinance number 1458 be amended.
Support.
It's been moved by Mr. Manalbaum, supported by Mr. Frazier, that we amend ordinance number 1458. Are there any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Mr. Chair? I'd like to make a motion that we introduce the amendment to ordinance number 1458.
Support.
It's been moved by Mr. Manalbaum, supported by Mr. Frazier, that we introduce amendment to the ordinance number 1458. Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Are there any opposed?
Thank you. That concludes my items for this portion. Thank you.
Very good. Going on to Madam Clerk?
Just looking for a request to start our June 24th meeting at 5:30 PM Eastern Standard Time, instead of our 6:00 Eastern Time due to the amount of agenda items that we're going to have.
Based on the day, I think that's a good idea. Do we have to make a motion for that?
Yes, yes.
Would anybody like to make that motion?
Mr. Chair? Go ahead.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we change the time of the June 24th meeting to 5:30 start time.
Support.
It's been moved by Ms. Taylor, supported by Mr. Frazier, that we move the meeting time of the June 24th city council meeting to 5:30 PM. Are there any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? All right. Anything else, Madam Clerk?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Ficassi?
I move the enactment of ordinance number 1703, Resoning Request of Claude Professional Properties.
Support.
It's been moved by Mr. Ficassi, supported by Mr. Frazier, that we enact ordinance 1703, Resoning Request for Chan Professional Properties. Are there any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? I'll entertain a motion to go into closed session.
Mr. Chair?
I move that we go into closed session?
Support.
It's been moved by Mr. Frazier, supported by Ms. Taylor, that we go into closed session. Madam Clerk, do we need a roll call?
Brightwell?
Yes.
Ficassi?
Ficassi.
Oh, yes.
Yes.
Frazier?
Whether or not administrative.
Manalbaum? Yes. Taylor?
Yes. We did that.
Cruz?
Yes.